Ronnie, you want to start? Start? I said, do we want to start? Yeah, let's start. We're live. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rodney Shatz came, would you like to lead us please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you, everybody, for coming to the Board of Trustees meeting. We are going to start off with a safety discussion with Officer Vilchesz from the Nassau County Sixth Precinct. Thank you, Officer, for coming.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Just for the record, we are recorded. We're, we're, the camera's up there, so we're, we're live on the internet, just in case somebody doesn't want to be on the internet.
So, my name is Officer Vilchesz, I'm from the Sixth Precinct Park Unit. Uh, POP stands for Problem with Policing. Uh, we basically, my team, what we do is basically, any problem within the Sixth Precinct, we handle. Uh, whether it's problems within, you know, the mayor's given us parking conditions, driving conditions, uh, active shooters. Uh, we do training with a lot of schools, couples, as well as the locals, where we just want to make sure to see if everyone, obviously, is out of the top way out. What about the main things that we want really want to talk about crime prevention is a lot of things that was going on in the Sixth Precinct is a lot of cars being stolen. And cars being stolen, honestly, it's the days of breaking the glass and going to the cars, it's pretty much nonexistent. Um, I, I, actually, these cars have been taken because people leaving key fobs in vehicles. Um, every car that has been stolen, pretty much ninety-seven percent of the vehicles, the keys are in the car. Um, it's dangerous thing, especially when people leave their garage doors as well, vehicles. These guys will just press it, and then if they notice that the keys are not in the car, they will do is now try to go into your house and get the keys to the car. And then try to take the vehicle itself, whether they steal a car, if they get to open the vehicle, if they don't have the keys, they'll steal whatever's inside the vehicle. Um, and if not, half of these cars are honestly, they're getting shipped out and being taken somewhere else to actually sell the cars. Or they just need their own car that's in other crimes, some other people committing crimes in your vehicle, and then, and then just being left somewhere else. You know, in different areas of, of where they use these cars for crimes. Um, but one thing I can tell you honestly is, um, burglaries, it's, it's not a huge thing yet, I mean, hopefully, it doesn't get to that point, but, um, a lot of things you can avoid is by actually motion lights, and like, tell you the truth, I mean, like, a lot of these motion lights, does work, doesn't work, guys now are not scared. Unfortunately, it's, you can do everything you want, but you have to just try to little seriously lock, lock the doors, uh, even in your homes, obviously, your vehicles. Uh, because more and more people are coming into this area, because what it is, is when they see that, they can steal one car, they steal another car, they steal another car, they keep coming back. It may be easy for people to come back and steal cars, which they have a lot of high-end cars, you know, from BMWs, Land Rovers. Uh, you know, it's, it's a big thing where if I could steal a car and keep coming back, because it's that easy. When people leave keys in the cars, why would I want to go somewhere else when I can just do it here, and I can go to the same driveway and steal another car the following day? They have a new car, you leave the keys again, the following week, I'm coming back and stealing the car again. So, those are the things, um, that we're trying to actually, people may not have seen the big signs, we have also signs saying, you know, lack of keys, get your value, not your vehicle, taking your key fobs, um, little things like that, um, mails, you know, if you want on vacation, they'll post it on social media, I know that's a big thing, I'm not a social media guy, but everyone posted, I'm going away for three weeks, and you're telling everyone, you know, it's going to be in the house for those three weeks. Uh, avoid those things like that, um, avoid having mail being piled up in your house, um, they're going to know, there's no one there. Have either your neighbors, or you, or you stop your mail, uh, little signs like that have, have, uh, there's like timers in Home Depot where you can actually put a timer on the lamp on your TV where it just turns on and looks like someone's, someone's home. You know, little things like that, I mean, if, if they want to get into your house, they're going to want to, they're going to go, they're going to see that car, and I want this car. You know, to the point where they're not here really, if they do get into your house, they're not really here to harm you. Uh, what they really do is with a quick hit, I want to get inside, I'm in your house, I'm in burglarized, I'm going to steal money, jewelry, put my backpack, take off, and police will never see me, you know, I'll see the police cars, I'll hide into the bushes, and then, and then all of a sudden, take off. They're not really here to harm you, but it hasn't happened, it hasn't, um, we don't want to get to that point, but the more difficult you make it for people to go into your cars, into your homes, the more it's going to just push everyone out of this area, and then you'll just hit another area where it's going to be a lot easier. So, I, there's, I can't really stress it enough to literally seriously take the keys out of your car, lock the doors, check your windows. I know a lot of people when they're home, you know, you're eating this and that, you have your windows on the second floor, you know, windows open. That's also a prime spot where, you know what, you have no alarm on, you're eating downstairs, they go up to your second floor, they go straight in the sink, they, they go straight to the master bedroom, steal all the women's jewelry, men's watches, the cash hedges, whatever you want, on top, and if you leave your keys, also, just hide with car keys. Put it in an area where it's like you want to be a part of it, they all want to make you dance. Because, like I said, the easier it is, the more they keep coming back here, because they know that you keep doing it, you keep coming back. And unfortunately, with the new bail reform, they're released. So, we could arrest these guys thousands of times, but they're coming thousands of times back, because guess what? It's easy, if you leave the keys, I'm going to just get them, keep coming back. And that's how just criminal things is, the easiest, what they have, they're just going to keep coming back and just be in the same areas. You want to try to avoid that, even when we do arrest them, like I said, it's torture me, and release. So, like I said, the board, it's like you say, the more you put a speed bump in the car, the less the speed. You know, the more speed bumps you put, you know what, I'm going to hit this block, I'm going to go to another one, and that's the whole scenario what we're trying to do. Is just make it difficult for anyone trying to come in this area to commit any kind of crime, you know, with the skilled cars, or, like I said, for purpose. That's what I really have. Any questions or any, uh? Yeah, I have a question.
Sure. Has there been any forced entry in this village?
Um, there, can you give me the numbers, um, actually, my inspector is coming too. Um, he has actually some of the numbers where it's, like, you know, they do, yeah, I, we do have videos where there's guys actually using a break ticket, you know, um, one of the windows, a lot of flash, and they just go in there. They really tend to, those tend to make, that's going to create noise, so they want to try to get in as fast as possible. So, if I see a second one open, I'm going to try to go in there. You know, i- it's, it's just making it more difficult, right? You know, can it happen, yes it does, I mean, I'm not going to say it's a hundred percent foolproof, that, oh, well, once you, when it's all closed, it's going to be nothing. You know, people do that stuff, these are times where, now is test your times, and, um, things like that can happen. But nine out of ten times, it's because people leave the doors open, doors are open, or have the garage door open, they go right to the car, and all of a sudden, the door's open from the house, from the garage, and they just walk in. Yes?
Uh, Officer, please, uh, forgive me, this might be a dumb question, but would you advise double locking your car door? Or exactly?
Uh, I mean, like I said, if, once you lock the door of the car, that's it, you really can't get in, it's, it's, you know, are there special machines that maybe can override? Possibly, uh, we've been trying to link with the police departments to see if we can close up cases, uh, but really, for the most part, it's been cars with keys inside. And that's what all we can see is in the pallet, is literally the keys in the car, and they just think, just go in, that's doors, wants to see the doors open, well, from the mirrors. New cars, the mirrors are out, these guys know that, the keys are inside the car. It's an old model that, you know, they'll still try to test the doors, if, if, once they open it, they say, ah, let me just press the button to see if it starts, and when it starts, the alarm goes off, and they just take off like it's their own vehicle.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, yes?
I have a question, so, um, my concern, I, my neighbor's concern, they don't seem to be stopping in the driveway. Like you said, they, they know that they can get out, they're getting very cold, they're getting very comfortable living in the neighborhood, they're specifically coming to Flower Hill and target, I feel like they're targeting Flower Hill, but what, they, they're not stopping in the driveway, they're going to the windows, they're looking in the windows, they're trying the back doors, they're going around in the backyard. So, what's stop, what prevents them, well, not prevents them from breaking glass or breaking the door, how would you stop them that? Because that's what concerns me. If you want to take the car and sell it for parts, it's a pain in the neck, and I don't like it, but do it. But if you're going to come and you're going to look in my windows in the middle of the night when my family's sleeping, or if we're in the backyard in the pool, and you think you can get in and grab my bags, if you're going to come into my house when you know that I'm there, that concerns me, because that's very scary. And it may not stop if it's with your keys, and it may not just stop if it's with your jewelry, because what if my children walk in, or what if I walk in on them? That's the part that I'm very concerned about, because if they know that they can get out, and they know that Flower Hill is an easy target, we need to do something to stop them from thinking that they could get into the house. We need to stop them before they get into Flower Hill and say, you can't come here because we're watching you, or we're doing a little bit more. That's the part that concerns us.
And I also want to add, before I daylight, I just heard, on a Sunday afternoon at three o'clock, my, my friend just.
Well, it used to be, it used to be at night, now these guys are getting this bold, dirty, dirty.
So, I mean, we're not, we're not leaving keys in the car, they broke, they walked into one of my cars, two weeks later, my neighbor across the street. They don't care, everyone has cameras, we're sharing information, they all look the same, two weeks later, they're right across the street from my neighbor's house. So, it's that, like, okay, we're hiding, we don't put our keys, I mean, like Lisa said, what is he going to stop, what more can we do? I mean, they need to know that, I mean, all the neighbors, we're all very aware, and we have our eyes open, but there's more that needs to be done.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we have, uh, we, we actually have more police officers on the street, we have, I mean, full post cars, like, they do a special at night, guys. Uh, because it was happening more at night, it is happening now more during the day.
Crazy.
Um, there's no fear, because what happens is, when I get arrested for stealing a car, I get paid out, at least two hours later, I'm going to come right back.
And I, and I also want to say, no one's hiding in bushes, the car was in my driveway with the lights on. The three o'clock in the afternoon, when the neighbor and one of that choose in the backyard with her husband and the kid, kid, um, the children, they parked in front, went to my neighbor next door, and the one next door. In broad daylight, three o'clock in the afternoon on a Sunday.
Yeah, they're just walking right out the driveways and testing it, and then if you question them, they just scatter.
So, they're not hiding in bushes?
No, it's, it's, uh, like I said, it used to be a night thing, but now actually, it has actually turned during the day. Um, you're our best assets, if you guys call 911, if you see the person, you know, give a description, I'll give, read the description of the vehicle while they take off. Nine out of ten times, that's already stolen vehicle, and that's why they're using it, because they stole from another previous house.
I have to say, I have to say, when that happened to our neighbor, close today, took the wallet out of his car. Yes, he left his window open, but the next day at three o'clock, I was outside, because now I'm watching, and the same white truck with darkened windows drove ever so slowly, so I get in my car and I go to follow him, and he takes off, because now we know, they're watching. Because I pulled up next to him in his side, his driveway side window, I could not see the person in the window, it's now dark and dim.
Right.
So, it's the same one that was on the surveillance camera next door at three o'clock going into this wallet of his car.
Well, that brings another good point, where tinted windows, right? I would tell people, listen, don't think you're not, you're bothering us, saying, oh, I want to call police for this. You see something, say something, whether you think it's the smallest thing, for us, it might not be. So, you could say, like, what you said, you saw the same truck, same tinted windows, obviously, give the best description that you can. If you can get a plate, even better, because if not, maybe the following day you see it, now we can stop that van, get the information, now get, you know, do what we say is a field interview, where we get the information, so it's, we have their information in our computer system. And after you do do something, it's, oh, this is the same guy, and now, oh, you know what, believe, if he lives wherever, you know, Brooklyn, Queens, you know, or wherever, now, now we get him. But a lot of people, what it is, they see something, and they'll pull like three days later, oh, I saw this like three days ago, I started to doubt this. But if you see something, if heaven forbid, you're looking at it, you're waiting till the morning.
I tried to get complete, it was like, they picked them up on my regular, the, the guy who was in front of my house trying to get into my son's car. So, I got his image, but you can't see anything, so all my lights are on, and you still see, you can see the, they give a toll, they got the picture.
Right.
They got some other.
Yeah, maybe something like that, just call, I don't want to say, listen, I have video.
They do that every, every day, right?
Yeah, I mean, like, if you see the video, the detectives do look at it, say, okay, well, if you have other, ask us, we have computer detectives. I can actually manipulate the lighting, this and that, and maybe we can find something. Like I said, what you might think is nothing, we have experts who are, and they can actually maybe manipulate the lighting, you can zoom in a little bit more. But little things like that, I, I tell everyone to not hesitate to call 911, don't think that, oh, you know what, it's nothing, I didn't really see it, it was not really a crime. Let us determine that, let us determine, like, you know what, I just saw this, found, I found this a little weird, or maybe there's a car parked here, and none of the neighbors. We'll question, we'll look at the car, we'll run the plate, see what it is, comes out stolen and why, maybe your cameras, Ring is actually going to help us tremendously. Because that actually, we start asking people, we can unlock everyone's doors, maybe some neighbor caught, maybe we didn't catch it at the household, but we saw it, the car drive at three in the morning. Maybe ten minutes after something occurred, and now we see a car passing at this block, and that was all because someone had their Ring camera, and we saw it in the block. Those are the things that are helping us, where we actually catch them, driving around, um, like I said, it's a very difficult thing, because when they see police cars, they hide. And then when we disappear, and we drive off the block, that's when they read it here, and they come out of nowhere. And, you know, um, it's, it's weird to the point where, you know, who is it? We don't know, is it going to be the Horizon that coming for repairs, is it UPS drivers in deliveries, is it the last neighbors, is it, you know? Guess what, if you know, like, your fam, you know, your neighbors don't work, and they're not there, and, okay, well, then you have to question them. We'll question them, say, all right, let's get the homeowner, let's just see if, are you really supposed to be here? All these other things will help us, uh, where you think, like I said, minor, it's going to help us tremendously, maybe you didn't do anything, or maybe you read it, but at least we have your information in our system. Now, if you are going to do something, now we got you. You know, so now, like, you know what, a lot of the guys that said in ten two, like, if we keep locking you up, maybe we get released, but at the same time, it's like, you know what, I'm tightening up the rest of you, I'm just going to go to a different area. The more difficult you make it for them, the less they're going to come back to this area, which is my, my thing. You know, the more and more, they're going to say, you know what, forget it, let's just hit this area. I mean, I want to hear, they get to go to Queens, you know, for, for High State, I want to hit that, so all the other precincts, and I was like, because then he comes out of a problem anyway. But, like I said, things like this is where, little by little, we're trying to push them out. Uh, because, like I said, does it really stop them? No, look, can we be turned? Yes. Because what it is, is that, it's just, it is going to be sick and tired, all right, I got a call, I got arrested, now I'm going to go, go, just, I got arrested again. You know, it might not stop, but guess what, it's in a point where, let's just get it, where it's easy cars, red the cars go, and get our money for it.
Now, Officer Vilchesz, I was told by Commander Vegas that the majority of the cars coming to do the crime are either stolen cars or cars with stolen plates.
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes.
So, if we do get images of those plates?
We could, we could just link it, I mean, it might not, it might not be that, okay, now we can find it to the stolen plates, but if that plate was found somewhere else, or found, like, maybe in Rain, like, maybe two weeks ago.
Right.
So, now we have a little pattern, all right, stolen vehicle, yes, I pinpointed it to that person, but, I was like, yeah, I saw that car in Rain, I, you know, detectives will see that. And so, it's all right, well, it's stolen cars, so now I see what they're doing, most, most of the vehicles, pretty much, yeah, they're all stolen plates. So, they're not really using legitimate cars, they'll have one car coming, the other cars to look out, and then four guys will come out and start opening doors. And then, like I said, they'll just take off, and just, just don't give, uh, this kind of place.
Excuse me, I have another question.
Sure.
What kind of coverage does the police have in Flower Hill? I mean, how, how many policemen, how many cars?
Well, we do have.
Twenty-four hours, I think, twenty-four seven, is it?
Well, we are twenty-four seven, we never stop, we're, we're, uh, we, we, we work twenty-four around the clock every day. Uh, we have the post cars, uh, we also have all the units, um, Vegas also has all the units where, um, unmarked, unmarked cars, also guys dressed like homeless, or or even more, uh, or 2D, which is like maybe regular police, and like that, so. We do have vehicles where it's like different, like, Sir, Code, PSO, all these guys are driving around the areas, looking, and questioning all these guys to see, we're talking about three, four, five? Numbers, I don't know, because that all varies, it all depends on the, uh, how much we have. Um, like I said, it's not just really Flower Hill, like I said, Inspector Vegas has all the numbers, I don't know, the numbers really Flower Hill is not that much. Okay, with Rain, that, there are two other areas that we've been really getting hit really hard. Rain is an area where we've been getting a lot, causing sticks here and there, um, but that's not to say that, oh, you know what, there's, they can do patterns. One month, I'll go here, another month I'll go to the other, another month I'll go to Roslyn, the States, another month I'll go to Roslyn Harbor. It's just little things like that, that we try to avoid, and see if there's patterns, that's, that's what helps us out. Every time you pull, I'll say, I saw this car, because I think that car was in my house in States, or this car was in these hills. So, now we know, we see the pattern, I say, all right, this one, you're hitting this, this one, so then, we'll, we'll shift our parts to where the problem areas during that week, that month, or whatever.
So, so there are, let's say, two cars that only, that's Flower Hill.
Flower Hill has two parts that always.
They're always two cars.
Yeah, they're always on patrol gear.
And is it double lane car?
Single lane, we're all single lane control.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's all.
Do you notice any differences in villagers that have licensed plate readers, or the those that don't?
Uh, not really, it's, uh, it's, it's, there's a deterrent here and there, I mean, the more information you have, uh, it's not, this might strike the Vegas right here.
Strike plate?
Uh, we don't have more numbers, uh, the question is, but plate readers, it's an important piece. You turn more.
Folks in the back, there are plenty of seats up front.
I just wanted to ask.
Come on down.
Folks, plate, hi, everybody, my name is Hodge Vegas, I'm the commanding officer of the Sixth Precinct. I have another meeting, or else I will be on time, so my apologies. Plate readers, does anyone know a car is stolen? Car stolen, or it's reported stolen, so you get your car stolen at three in the morning, and a plate reader picks up your car on one phone call. We have no idea it's stolen, we have no idea, until you wake up and go, where's my car? So, it's not a bad thing, it's a great way to harvest information, um, but you have to, now, it's got to be incorporated into the systems that we have, we're using, it can be done. I believe Roslyn, the States. They had it, Kings Point has an amazing system.
Yes, still. These hills.
Uh, yes, so, it's something to consider, and we're going to go over some numbers for you right now also, uh, just to, just to kind of be a guide. So, talking about the good news, we're talking about the bad news. Um, I don't want to stop you.
No, 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 that was just a.
Okay.
Hey, Hodge, you want to do me one favor? If you stand there, at least you'll be on camera.
Oh, you want me on camera?
Yeah.
I was your bitch, I wasn't, I.
Turn my phone off, so.
There's a chance to go by.
Yeah.
I have, I have a question, one of the points you made was about the bail reform, and it's, I, I guess that's part of the equation, just in case.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Turnover and things, is that, is that something that maybe politically, political politicians about?
I agree, that's right.
So, so bail, the bail reforms is causing increases in crime?
You think?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Depends on, depends on who you ask.
Yeah. There's no question.
So. We can talk about that all you want, we have a lot of things, but it's not going to change, it will feel good talking about it, it's not going to change anything. So, how do we, how do we come about, how do we solve these problems right now? I'm going to go over some numbers with you real quick, okay? Flower Hill has been hit a while, okay, that's the bad news. The good news is, there's not been a major crime reported in Flower Hill since June twenty-sixth, okay? Major crime, I don't know about cars broken into or whatever, and by the way, cars are not broken into, because we leave them unlocked. So, I'm going to go over some stuff with you real quick, and I'm going to beg you, I'm going to beg you to do something for me, okay? And we can solve a lot of our problems, we go over those numbers. So, what we've done, once we saw the update, you are leaving the precincts stolen cars, we flooded the area now. We never see a car, we never see a car, we've had our cars with that turret lights on right now, so we're not going to catch anybody, but we're going to try to scare them away now. That's, that, that's the point where we're at, the county is going crazy with stolen cars, we in particular, the Sixth Precinct, we are getting crushed, we're getting crushed. And we didn't forget how to do police work in one year, so let me just go over last year's numbers real quick. Last year, Flower Hill, and there are two posts, six oh seven and six ten. Last year, from January first until, I don't know, if I'm not mistaken, this brings July first, you had eight major crimes reported in Flower Hill last year. This year, you have thirty-two, thirty-two, okay?
Inspector.
Three hundred percent increase in crimes.
Inspector, excuse me, can, can you just define what serious crime is?
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I can read down the list, basically, uh, burglaries, robberies, felony assaults, uh, stolen cars, felon, we're, we're the only felonies here, okay? Uh, the good news is, we don't have many instances where bad guys want to have any kind of interaction with us, okay? The problem with that is, if you saw the video of that house, where they were trying to doors, it scared, it scared me. I've been doing this for a long time, it scared me, it really got me, it got my attention big time. Not only that, it kept my attention, but sort of the fifty emails that followed right after that. The problem with that, that night, was that, uh, we weren't notified until eight and a half hours later. So, any solvency there was, was gone, okay? I'm not going to, I'm not going to point fingers or anything, but they were so concerned, they rolled over, went back to bed, and called at nine o'clock in the morning. We can't do anything at that point, we can't do anything, okay? We get it right then and there, we're quiet at night, like, we're going to flood the area, we can get a bunch of cars there real quick, okay? And notify their agencies, so, if you, if you get a sense that something's not right, call us. The one I'm going to say, suspicious car, the one that's suspicious, it's driving by very slow, and stopping and looking, maybe she looked who's driving, maybe. Let us determine that, okay? We can't get a phone call that says, hey, they don't belong here, don't tell us that, tell us why they don't belong there. They're stopping by, and they're, they're looking inside houses, they're looking, okay, now we have something, let us do that. You have never bothered us, if I said that twelve times to you tonight, you never bothered us, nobody's ever going to say, don't bother with that nonsense, hang up on me. Okay, if they do, let, let me know, that's never going to happen, it's never going to happen, I don't use the word negative very often, that will not happen, okay? So, what caused the increase in crimes, okay? Well, I'll tell you what, I'll tell you the two categories we're up to most, and then we'll talk about the third one that concerns me a little bit, okay? Twelve hundred percent, a twelve hundred percent increase in stolen cars, last year, you had one, this year, you have thirteen, you're leading the precinct, okay? In every single case, with the exception of two cars unlocked with keys inside, okay? The two that were not, one was at the steakhouse, and one was at St. Francis, they left it with the valet. Let's keep that in mind also, we're seeing that a little bit more often, and that just all of a sudden came up, with your, hey, everything's fine, here's my keys, valet, I'll be going, I'm going to have my little steak, get the ice cream spinach, and a bless one with that, I'm going to come out, and it's going to be fine, except that the valet partner, uh, wants something to happen. Is there a connection? We don't think so, it also happened at St. Francis, so he went there to have something done, came out, like, four hours there, there, nothing, he had to go to the hospital, or whatever it might be. Now you can make the cars gone, they look at the video, and they show up, it's your person going in there, grabbing a key, and, so, is it an anomaly? Yeah, am I telling you not to use valet? I'm not going to tell you that, I never do, that's just me. That's just me, I never do, I will give the guy a buck, because I'm going to park my own car. And that's what I do, you know, that's, that's not, not everybody can do that, though, some people need to use the valet, so, for the most part, I think it's safe. But I'm just letting you know, we're seeing an uptick with that. Another thing we're seeing an uptick with, stolen cars, I'm leaving my car running, I run inside, grab my stuff, box, rent box, or whatever they're called, and one back there, maybe cars, no. Okay, we're seeing that now also, also. There are nice things in this town, there are really nice things, and some bad guys want them, okay? So, let me just go on to the next category real quick, okay? So, we saw a twelve hundred percent increase in stolen cars, from one to thirteen, okay? Larceny's From Auto, which is a misdemeanor, but I'm going to include them, because they kind of go hand in hand, a six hundred, excuse me. A six hundred, excuse me, a five hundred percent increase. We went from two to twelve, okay? In every one of those, the cars are locked. Okay, so if we just take those two categories and we just do this. Crimes are even as best the last year, okay? Now I'm going to talk about the third category. You went from zero residential burglaries to two, okay? We haven't had a residential burglary here since April fourth, I believe, because we had one in March, we had one in April, okay? Uh, so the fact that there's two, kind of on our radar, but we haven't had, we haven't had anything in three months other than incidents, uh, where they were trying to doors. Believe it or not, that's classified as either an attempted trespass or a suspicious unusual incident. We're not trying to hide them. I know exactly why they were there. We all know why they were there. They were trying to break in. But again, this is what I told my wife when I told her the whole thing, I showed her the video, and she got scared. She goes, what were they trying to do? And my wife is a cop, so she knows, she knows better. I said, where are all of our car keys? And our car keys, think about where your car keys are. It's the front door, you walk in, my house, and right about there is every car key. And it's just they're all hanging on this cute little thing my wife got with, you know, the labels, whatever it is. They're all right there. They're within ten feet of walk through the front door. So I'm not going to tell you hide keys because it's, because then you can't find them, okay? That was my key. But just think about little things like that. Think about how we can prevent a burglary. They, they want to get into your house. Oh, one of those burglaries had all the fingerprints, quote unquote, of that professional thief from South America. Second floors, glass doors, that kind of thing, where they know the alarm is not set, okay? In this case, the alarm was set. Homeowners said, no, they've been false alarmed so many times in the past. Tell the police not to come. It's, it's, it's a false alarm. And they got there and it wasn't a false alarm. The house was in the process of being sold, so there's no loss for the fact that somebody got inside it, okay? Very often this group, uh, and they're active and they're seasonal, believe it or not. They, they go away for the summer and they're going to be back again in September, like locals, they come out and they do their thing. But they go to affluent areas all around the country, all around the country. And you're going to see it happen when daylight savings hits, okay? So when you're driving, I, I always play a little game. I can't help it, I play this game. And they say, let's see who's home and who's not, okay? And I guarantee you, you'll know who's home and who's not just by looking at the house. Okay, and if you can figure it out, guess what?
Thank you.
They sure can, all right? So little things, you know what happens on motion, our, our, our sensors go off at a certain time, lights go on at a certain time. Stagger once in a while, okay? Or when the daylight savings happens, it's kind of, it's, it's out of whack a little bit, so. Now it's not happening as much. Now you, you know, it's dark out, cans are out, newspapers are out there. It's so obvious. Uh, but the professional groups, if they want to get in, uh, it's going to be hard to stop them, okay? It's going to be hard. My advice would be to make sure you're lit up at night, make sure your alarm's set all the time. And these professional groups, by the way, very often they're in the daytime. They're in the daytime, they're not coming at night. They don't want you, they want you to wake up and not know anything happened. They don't want no confrontation at all. Okay, so these professional groups are usually in the daytime. And why is there an uptick with that? Possibly because we're at work now, whereas maybe a year ago, less of us were going to work. More of us were staying home or working virtual. So we wonder if that's the thing, but there's no pattern. There's no discernible pattern we can say, hey, they're looking after X, Y, or Z. Okay, so the bad news is, I just told you, you're up in crime here big time. The good news is, nothing's happened here. We've, we've had reports since June twenty-sixth. And the crimes that we're talking about are entirely preventable. So I will beg you, I will be pretty pleased with sugar on top, just lock your doors. It's so frustrating because I read it and I just sit there, God, it's every, okay? I've done it unknowingly. We had a house in Kings Point, thank God, not our jurisdiction. Three cars were stolen. One was a nicer car than the other. BMW was the worst car they had. They had incredible cars. There was a fourth car, they're a landlord. There were not enough bad guys. They ran out of bad guys to steal the fourth car. That's how it was. Every key was left right there. You all know the side view mirrors, right? Okay, so you're basically saying, please, now, what are we doing? We, here's the problem. We had problems strapped more not too long ago, trying to the doors. We flooded that area. We haven't had a mouse loop in that neighborhood since. But what does that do, folks? We're creating a vacuum somewhere else. We take all our resources from places. Say, go over there, you get a lot of attention over there. And it creates a vacuum. And now we're losing great, we're great in East Hills. Stolen cars are happening all of a sudden. So. I, I know, I say it all the time, my other master people, I never see a cop there. I know they're there. I'm just not at the window checking all the time. What we're doing later, having their lights on, so residents aren't going to see us. We've got a few complaints over that. But they see us, they see us. So here I am, uh, you can fire away. And I will do my best to answer any question, any concern you have. I'm not going to tell you arm yourselves. The good news is, there's not violent crime going on here. But when people are afraid to come home, or they're, they're telling me that, hey, I'm kind of nervous leaving my bed, that's a problem. That's a problem because you need to feel secure. You need to feel secure, yes.
You say flooded the area. What physical amount of protection are we having in the village? Do you have, do they have law cars?
There are two cars. We have two cars.
You say, I'm flooding the area because I, I anticipate my herd call. You take them great net, you take acid, and what does that amount to?
What that, what that amounts to is, we, we, we take cars from other places in the precinct, other posts, and we'll say, okay. So then we'll, we'll do it with, with our intelligence handles. And say, hey, one of the crimes, when is, when is this happening the most? And she'll sit there and she'll crunch the numbers and she'll say, this is what, this is what you want to, you want to kind of focus on during these times. Believe me, in certain days we are on it. We'll, we'll try to do it as intelligently as possible with the most bang for our money. If I'm taking a great net car, I'm an acid car, maybe an East Hills car. And one by one, we're going to have to do some, of direct control. Now, we have, we identify two problem areas every month. Every month I go before the commissioner and every chief on his job and have to explain every number, okay? Since January first, it's been most unpleasant, okay? You got to explain and what we're doing about it. And you sit there, you explain, that's what we're doing. And we try to get outside units and also. Sometimes you don't see police officers because we don't want you to see police officers, okay? We don't want you to see us. So we have plenty of closure, like D S O, like SER, like CO. And they're there, okay? I drive the neighborhoods. When I have the duty, even when I'm on, I'll drive the black Explorer, no matter now it's police car. I'll be driving by because I work here, this is my place here. And I want to see what's going on. I don't work nine to five, right? I work all kinds of odd, crazy hours and I have to drive. I'll use any excuse to have that off as I can. Any questions, please fire away. Nothing is silly. And if you, if there's something you don't want to ask, I'll wait a little while when this is over, but I don't know when you're going until. Uh, but you can ask me anything you want to ask once you, you don't want us to speak. I'm not sure how long you're going until.
We're, we have the rest of our public meeting, but actually we want to talk to you when you're done outside.
Very good.
Feel free.
Yes.
You said there were thirteen, an increase from two to thirteen?
Stolen cars.
How many of those did you? How many people did you arrest after the thirteen?
Three.
Stolen, three? Did you arrest them quite a bit after, or did you arrest them chasing them into the act? The answer, the reason for the question is, were any of them armed, three?
Okay, first body question.
Another second question.
They stole a car in Flower Hill. They went to New Jersey. Car wasn't reported stolen. It's a New Jersey car, it's not, let's say Marlboro Township. Uh, they see, they get to pursue the, the car. And they, they get their registration and it's not coming back to anything. They'll go back to where I said when I first walked in, another stolen car. But they realize something's not right. They called the sixth precinct and said, hey, do you have this, this car that we just got to pursue? Can you go to the address and find out what's going on? We go to the address. Home owner says, oh my God, where's my car? Car got stolen at night by the bad guys, back to Jersey, committed more crimes. That's why they steal cars, by the way, for the mo, for the most part. It's not to send them anywhere. It's to commit other crimes. But anyway, I go to arrest. So now they're going around and they're, uh, they get pursued by the New Jersey police wherever they're at. These bad guys end up coming out of Flower Hill. We have no idea why. Detective sergeant is sitting there and looks and sees, oh my God, that's the car that we're looking for. And so the car starts driving away, detective sergeant is behind them. They don't know if they found it because it's an unmarked car. And that's the pursuit we all heard about these stolen cars, okay? They've got the other.
So more than likely, they will be armed. So my question.
I'm sorry, no. More than likely, they were be armed. In this case, they were armed.
And that segues into my next question. If somebody's backing out of your driveway stealing your car, and you were to come out of your house for the gun. And is that considered the use of deadly force if they're backing out and you're behind them and you fire at them?
Yes, that would be, if you discharge it with a firearm, you, you are using deadly force.
And are they using deadly force? Because you can't just use deadly force because you feel like shooting a firearm. When they back a car out, because that's a vehicle which can be lethal, is that considered deadly force? If you were behind that car chasing somebody, stealing that car from your driveway?
You talking about me? We're talking about?
Anybody.
Nope, we got to break it down. Police officers is a day.
Police officers is different.
Okay, civilians, get out of the way of the car. Seriously, so you can get out of the way of the car. Okay, car's coming out, man, it's a day. I think my license. Hit the guy. Guess what? Car's coming out, just stop. Car's coming out. We teach our police officers that. We are forbidden firing at, at, at cars. We're forbidden.
You answered it because you have the option to get out of the way.
Yes, and there's a, I can go down, we can talk about the use of force. And this is the bottom line when it comes to that. We have to be reasonable, okay? You have to be one hundred percent right. Okay, so my advice to you, if you are licensed, a weapon owner, be reasonable. Be reasonable when it comes to that, okay? This is what I tell people all the time, okay? I very rarely carry my gun off duty. I'm one of the very few police officers, probably do that.
Well, why?
I'll tell you why. The only time I'm ever going to pull my gun and you got to reuse it is when Ferguson's walking down the train and shooting people. If somebody wants my law, they're getting my wallet. I'm not dying for my law. Everything is replaced. Take it, here's my car, please. Take, I have a shooting car, take, that's all with it. There you go. I'm going to pull my gun out. Because now Eddie's going to come. Does he know I'm a cop? And now I got to identify myself. Okay, I'm a bit of a eastern background. There's a terrorist event. I don't want to be shot by the cops, okay? I would look at me also, unless I am, I'll give you another great example. When I was a New York City police officer, my, my unmarked car that I used was a taxicab. I put a turban on my head every single day. My partner put a turban, and we'd go out and we saw everything. And we got involved in everything. But when I got out of the car with my police jacket on and my tongue was dead and my shield, they didn't see any of that. All they saw were all the holes on my head. You can't imagine what I was called by police officers. You can't imagine. So these are all things that are both in my head. I'm not going to pull my gun unless I absolutely have to. Okay, and again, all the, also, I implore you to be, be careful.
Yes, are tasers legal in New York City?
Yes, they are. Be careful with them because they can be used on you also. That's what I, that's serious, just be careful. They can be used on you.
What's the range of tasers?
The ones we have, the new ones, they have longer cord, or it's training one to twenty-five feet, they're roughly twelve to fifteen feet. Okay, and it all depends on the time of year. Because right now, if I taser somebody, I'm going to taser you because no problem at all. If you're wearing a jacket, you have some issues there, okay? And they don't always work. I've seen people pull them out, okay? I've been tasing. It worked. Oh my God, it worked. Far from the worst seconds of my life. But you know something? I got up and a minute later, I was teaching cars. It gets over like that, but it's just pretty long, my sense.
Inspector?
Yes.
Can, I'm, I'm an attorney, just want to add that, uh, when you say are tasers legal, what you're really asking is, is possession of a taser legal? Because anything is a weapon if it's used as a weapon. If you use a pencil to stab someone, you can be charged with possession of a weapon. So, um.
You can't be, but you're not going to kill anybody and be charged with murder.
Well.
Unless you stab them in the right place. Lieutenant, um, does anybody else have any questions about cars? Because I want to change direction a little bit here.
No problem.
I want to just quickly go into quality of life issues. One particular problem that we have in this village, and, and it is really almost out of control, is failure to acknowledge stop signs.
Okay, tell us locations, tell us the times that it happens most.
Anytime during the day, anywhere.
You got to walk on the boulevard.
I've given you our list.
Yeah.
And I will give you a new list. We'll, we'll change it up.
Yep.
We tried very hard to get in, we used to have an enforcement officer. His name was Anthony Crachio. And he was your worst nightmare. Like, there was a call and please pull him off. We don't want him to be here. And he was that bad. It was a committee officer's dream because he'd write two, three in a month, a month. Uh, it was.
And we said bad.
He retired, you know why he retired? Yeah, somebody complained. He had a, a cluster of complaints made against him in a very short period of time, and he just left.
But I, I, I see that as one of the biggest risks. I mean, look, you know, a house getting robbed is a terrible thing, but I think what's happening more is this, um, this blatant disregard for stop signs in a community where there are a lot of kids playing in the street, there are parents walking, there are people walking, people riding their bicycles. And, you know, I wouldn't sit every day with a stop sign in front of my house. And it's not, you know, the guys who slow down and roll through, okay, that's not so bad. I'm talking about not even slowing down and just whipping through these stop signs. And it's, it's, it's scary.
We have spoken, just give me an updated list.
I'll give you an update.
We'll do, we'll do that. Even we get, if it's bad, then we get highway. High, highways like that, like, I'm sure I told you about. They will.
Yeah.
Like, good luck to you if you stop by there.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
The vehicle traffic law stuff, it's literally isn't any community. I would hate to live on a stop sign, mind you, I'm just trusting nuts. I go, I go walks with my wife. And I see people doing what you just said, trust me, insane, it does. And you sit there and I go, why can't a cop be there right now? Uh, a rule should be everywhere. The reality is, it can't be everywhere, okay? I'd love to tell you it can't, it just can't, so. Does anybody have any more questions for me? The lady?
I, I do. Um, I know that they have another meeting afterwards, but I have to circle back. I think it's very important, quality of life.
Mm-hmm.
Because we are all from Walnut Lane, which was.
You guys hate the horse. Walnut Lane got hit four times.
Yeah, we are very upset, very afraid, and guess what? We're policing ourselves. I went away the weekend, my neighbor across the street, Lynn, Lynn, I'm away. If you see anything, call the cops. So we're all rallying.
That's good.
But we, I, I know, but we have to do something more.
We have been. That's why nothing's happened there in a few weeks, okay? And we're going to keep you there. Problem is, when another fire pops up and strap for, or a great net.
I understand that. I, I.
I understand that also.
I get it. Uh, one more thing, two doors down, they actually broke in while my neighbor's home was under construction with all the crews there. They just went right in. It's unreal. Is it because of construction? I mean, I don't know. In Walnut Lane, we've had for the past twelve years, construction, nonstop, pretty much. So are they police, like, are they telling a buddy? Are they saying, hey, let's go across the street, please, go work? Like, we don't know. It's very odd.
That's very likely because I'm not speaking with my buddy had work done. And the next day, on his house, uh, a few days later, this car was stolen. And he swears it wasn't coincidence. He said a bad vibe, whatever, like his city cop also, so that's possible.
It's so brazen. Three o'clock, you're pulling up to somebody's house, breaking in the window, wallrest porkers everywhere. It's very weird.
That is true. I didn't even know how, I wouldn't even know how to contact that at the outset.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, but Walnut, at least four incidents in this year, at least, that we have reported. So believe me, when I read everything, it popped up that way, like, wow, Walnut, so.
Uh, I want to be paranoid. Would you think we're targeted?
No.
It's random.
It's random.
We're very enthusiastic about the Forbes.
Okay. Do you know what, what analogy I use? I like to fish, okay? If I go to that spot that I go to by the Lockwood Bridge, I'm going to keep going there until I can't. If I go there and I get fish every single time, I'm going to keep going there. Why am I going to go there else for? So. We will stop so much. Okay, I'm not putting it all on you. We're going to, we need to observe things also, but just push that button, please. I beg on you. I'm going to beg you five more times before I leave. Yes.
So about this, you calling the police quickly as soon as we can while we see something. I have been told by a neighbor, a person had their car stolen on the terrace. It was a Friday, four o'clock. Police were meeting, they called. The policeman actually spots the car and was told, he calls it in and was told by his inspector, policeman, do not pursue.
I'm the inspector. I didn't say that, but I would.
And why, why would you say that?
It's one o'clock in the afternoon.
That's where, that's where.
Okay. Because I don't want any of you dying for a car. That last pursuit in Flower Hill, speeds up to 100 miles an hour. I am stunned. Stunned. Nobody got hurt. When I heard- when I heard about it, all the random stuff, you know, like the deuce of hazard, I heard. Cars flying in the air on Sunday. So your kids are walking. It's- we got to pursue, and we're paying a terrible price for it right now. And I'm not gonna get into any more than that.
But what's the point of calling in immediately, and the police are right there, if they get another 12 miles?
In the hopes that maybe we can get a few more cars to block them in, that's a possibility. But I don't want them driving over your lawn. I don't want them taking the wrong road. I don't want them going the wrong way in traffic.
As you've pointed out, and the previous officer pointed out, what we're all mostly concerned about here is the escalation. Is it starts at cars, and they start coming back? You said we've started to have home invasions here. They mentioned that at the moment.
No, there's no home invasion. There hasn't been any home invasions, so no, no, no.
I was told, just right here, in Walnut Lane, there was some- you know.
They broke in.
We had two burglaries. We've had two burglaries in Flower Hill during the year, too. So I know there was one in March, there was one in April.
Okay.
You guys look for a home invasion, burglary.
Okay, what's there? It's simply home invasion, that's not a home invasion.
I'm kinda walking with a gun, and if we got a problem, that's a home invasion.
Somebody came into somebody's house. I don't know where to tell it exactly. It's a forensic.
I don't like having one of that. I don't like the law. It's really sick. But I'd rather wake up with one of your phones.
That is what we are concerned about. And it seems like one of the ways to stop is to get the people that are stealing here, and you catch them in the act, is to catch them. And I'd rather catch them than have some cars than have them come back and run into my house.
I have a personal problem. I'm not going to reach out. This is our policy, by the way. This is a policy. And if I told you what's happening, police officers got a problem, you wouldn't believe. Like, there's some serious discipline coming out of the mic. The supervisors and the police officers do the job.
So you're saying any police officer that would chase a robber would get disowned?
You need to justify the pursuit policy. And the pursuit policy is very specific. And it's pretty restrictive. For the most part-
Are you saying because of the law that you didn't want to, because of the law that you're pursuing?
That's a possibility. It's a possibility. But here's the other thing.
It's- that's not me. The person who came and went into my daughter's car, if he was not in, I have a picture. It looks identical to who went to Marge's house two weeks later. It looks like a young person. I agree with what the gentleman's saying. They have to know-
I agree with you.
It looks like the same identical-
I agree with you.
My buddy, and they look like teenagers. It looks like they're very young. You know, they're not all- they look like teenagers, young.
Do you need me to do that one? Don't push it. Like, girls, yes, everything we believe in.
I have police. You know, it's like, you're not gonna-
There are times that you're saying 4:00. 4:00 in the afternoon, 10:00, they're up to school. Kids are walking out. This guy's driving 100 miles an hour just to come right to us. He's not gonna care if all this kid's vehicle is, he's just gonna plow because he's gotta get away. I'm not gonna get caught from the cops. I'm not gonna get arrested again. He will get your kids. So I don't believe that a car is more valuable than your kids or anyone. Not just any kids. Anyone walking on the streets. So that's where we have to take account of, like, what's more important right now? Your lives, or just a car being stolen, and his life is mine? It's just to be a girlfriend, you know?
Again, it's not, we don't, obviously, we don't care as much about the car as anyone's lives. We just don't want them coming back and-
Well, I mean, there are a lot of kids. So we can lie here and say, yeah, we'll pursue when we see them. But I mean, our pursuit policy is very restrictive. And not only that, we're very close to the city line. Isn't that the reason why we're targeting them? Okay, we're not allowed to go to the city because of laws the city has regarding how police officers arrest somebody. Okay, if we put our hands on somebody's neck or kneel on their back, police officers are locked up for that. We are told, absolutely, you will not go to the city unless you have this ancient circumstances, or your commanding officer gives the okay for that. And very few times might we be okay for something unless we have supervisors going out. It's- the juice isn't worth the squeeze for a lot of us. It's not. Okay, I wanna say, yeah, we'll file, we'll pursue, we'll do. I would love to do that. We just can't. But he makes a very good point also. I've been involved with pursuits. I'm sure you've been involved in them. They're scary. And you think they're fun, when you're done, like, oh my God, I don't wanna do that again. I never wanna do that again. Because one little wrong thing, you go through a hall or a house, or whatever it might be, and what you're saying sounds great, and you'll be hurt somebody who's close enough. And that's- this is-
What about when that person that you could have caught comes back and does hurt somebody here? There's implications for not catching them either.
Well, you also gotta make sure you're in the door. Those three people that were caught with a gun couldn't release that next day. They were released on it. I'm just giving you facts. I'm not getting political. It was God, what happened. The only reason why the third one, because he had a warrant necessary. I see one of you's watching his house. Otherwise, gone.
They all left. They all went home.
All right.
They got caught.
Thank you, Commander Beckett. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Is a dog a deterrent to home invasions?
I think so. I really do. If I can go into this house or that house, and I hear a walkie here, and a walkie there, this one, I'm going. Okay? I don't have any rod that says your house is less likely to be broken into if you have a dog or not. I would choose one. That's my- that's- I would absolutely consider a dog. That's small. They don't want- they want to avoid confrontation, which is good. Doesn't- I know that's not- maybe it feels better, but they don't want to have a competition with the other person. Like, we're- aside from those two categories I showed you, there's not a lot going on here in the quality of life stuff, which we're gonna address. And we can solve the other two problems. I need your help on that, please. And not just your own. Just try and use a dog. Say, hey, that guy said something the other day. I mean, you don't know, it's a truck. No, oh, Teddy, yeah. Take his car and move it. Who do you drive? And do something like that. Or you joke, like, well, next time it could be some- not so much. So, okay. But I beg you again, four times.
So Commander, we'll be outside and answer more questions that people have.
Speak to me, okay? Thank you.
All right, let's make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Okay, public by mayor, and by trustees.
Yep, get the weight. All right, if you have any one to kick it off?
Okay. The first public hearing on the agenda is a planning application to partition a piece of property in Muncy Park within 400 feet of the village. This is the Manhasset Lake Water District is asking to convey a piece of property to the neighboring house at 315 Manhasset Woods Road. And Mr. Kaplan?
Hey, Rich, do we have the tripod? Where'd it go?
Would you like the photos of the- of the- these out there?
Um, yeah, that would be fine.
Yes, what's in the pack?
Peter, I'll press someone, close your door down. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kaplan, representing the Manhasset Lake Water District. Please give your appearance.
ME, yes, please. Benjamin Kaplan of the Lockwood, Lockwood Stone, I'm living here, 1122 Franklin Avenue, Garden City, New York, for the applicants in Manhasset Lake Water District, ME. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the board of trustees. As I mentioned, I'm Benjamin Kaplan, and I represent the Manhasset Lake Water District, the Yenkags, with respect to the application before the board. In short, this is an application to partition a portion of about 2,008 square feet. The water district's approximately 3 1/4 acre property in the Village of Muncy Park to enable the water district to transfer that piece of property to the Yenkags. The water district has determined-
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
I live right close by my thing.
Sure, absolutely. So the water district has determined with its consulting engineers that the district has no district need for that portion in question. Even though the property is entirely at the Muncy Park, which has already approved the partition, this comes before your board because the Nassau County Charter gives all villages shared jurisdiction or range of subdivision with a 300 feet of the village boundary. This partitioning and proposed transfer comes from a state of facts and has existed for decades. Ever since the water district decided to place its fence well inside its property. Oh. Point to the map here. So the portion to be partitioned is only approximately 0.05 acres. Okay, and it sits in the southeast corner of the district, of the water district's property, which is Section 3, Block 105, Block 106. And Yenkags own the abutting property here to the south at 315 Manhasset Woods Road in Muncy Park. Okay, which is Section 3, Block 105, Block 15. Okay, as I noted, the subject property is situated entirely within the Village of Muncy Park, and the Village of Muncy Park already approved this application in April 2022. And a copy of Muncy Park here, and the approval was submitted to the board along with the application. So people all have that. By way of brief background, so decades ago, the water district installed a fence that enclosed the elevated water tank in Muncy Park. In certain locations, however, the fence did not extend to the outer limit of the boundary line of the property. So as you might guess, many of the abutting owners over the years began to use all of the property on their side of the fence as if it were part of their backyard, even though a portion was owned by the water district. So the water district has long wished to legalize the situation in a way that protects the water district from liability for what goes on on its property and over which it has no control, or control on the other side of the fence. So to be good neighbor, the district board decided not to unrelatively move the fence after all that time, and invited the affected neighbors to enter into a use indemnification license agreement. And the district noted that it would be forced to relocate its fence in the case of any neighbor unwilling to do so. Most, if not all, of the neighbors that were buying these agreements. The Yenkags, however, proposed actually purchasing a portion of the district property that the Yenkags and their predecessors, the owners of 315 Manhasset Woods Road, have been using for decades. And in the case of the Yenkags, somewhat different from the others, there's actually a driveway on this piece of property, a more permanent improvement than the patio furniture and soccer and cross nets on other abutting neighbors. As I noted, the district has determined that it has no governmental purpose or use for this property. So the Yenkags, who have lived and raised their family in Muncy Park at 307 Manhasset Woods Road since the 90s, they raised their family there since the 1990s. They also purchased the house next door years ago at 315 Manhasset Woods Road, and with the ultimate intention of having children live there in the properties. So the Yenkags, desiring to have these properties remaining in their family for future decades, requested to acquire title to the small parcel issued here.
Can you hold on a second, please?
Sure. So we're talking about, I'll set that. This is the parcel in question that's gonna be transferred. And this is the Yenkags' home, and this is the water district property all the way back here at the fence line. So parcel property to be partitioned and transferred is over the fence line, which the Yenkags have been using as part of their property for decades. And it's on, it's in the driveway, extends into their driveway.
So the fence would stay there?
Yes, the fence will remain. So basically, all we're doing here is, the Yenkags are looking to acquire title to the small parcel issue to reflect on paper the actual living situation on the ground, which has been that way for decades. So from the water district's perspective, this is desirable outcome. It removes potential liability issues. It's a win-win all around. So just to walk you through some of the photographs, you have a clearer picture. So again, the property is Section 3, Block 105, Block 106, in Muncy Park. It's owned by the water district. And like I said, on the colored map I can have-
Just extras if somebody-
So on the colored map you have-
Sit down, Mr. Jay.
Yeah.
Again, we're talking about this small 2,000, approximately 2,000 square area.
Yes, sit down, please.
Okay.
You see it's marked, you see it's marked in yellow here as de-transfer area. Okay, and you have the blue, the blue fence line that was put in decades ago for the property, the largest with the extended past.
So can I just kinda cut to the chase a little bit here?
Sure.
So other than on paper, nothing physically is going to change?
That's correct.
So this is really just strictly a procedural matter, and it doesn't affect any homeowners or movement of fences or property or-
That's correct. It won't affect any neighbors, any movement. It's simply sort of correcting our behavior what's existed.
Right.
You know, if you look at the photos before, you know, you'll see Photograph 1. This is the Yenkags' garage here. And the blue marking they have is by the surveyor. That's actually where the property lies. So from the blue marking to the right is the water district property smack in the middle of their driveway.
So to make it clear, if you had not come here tonight, no one would even know that there's a change because nothing physical is changing, other than paperwork filed with the county.
That's absolutely correct. Okay. I'm gonna- second photograph, I'm sorry.
Finish it on this.
Okay, I'm almost done. I just wanna run through the photos just so you have a clear picture. Photograph 2 is just a poster up on that, on that last picture. Photograph 3, you can see the water tank in the back beyond the fence. You'll see the fence there. In the floor of the fence is the water district property, but it's, as you can see, it's part of the Yenkags' backyard. Photograph 4 and 5 is the Yenkags' driveway leading to the partition area. And Photograph 6 through 12, on the recent pictures, with, we put down blue markings because the blue surveyor lines were fading, so just to show the board what we're talking about, could have the L shape of room markings. Again, to the right is the water district property, although you can see it's smack in the middle of their driveway. So again, water district and Yenkags are just asking the board to approve the application to partition from Lot 106, indicated area to the 315 Manhasset Woods. And again, Village of Muncy Park, where the property is located, has already approved this location. Thank you for your time. Happy to address.
Thank you. I'll ask a question. Are you looking at all, is the homeowner looking to build on the property in question, or just leave it as it is?
Not that I'm aware. Just, you know, it's just to be left as it is. Maybe to clean and maintain better.
Yeah.
But that's certainly the intent.
I'm not familiar with the Muncy Park zoning, but how are they affected lots zoned currently? And will that change? Or any of that change to make this change?
I'm not sure if you can answer what your question is.
Well, obviously, the resonance is, I'm assuming, in a residential zone, right?
Correct.
Not sure where of the water district's land, how that is defined in terms of zoning, districting. And whether or not the subject parcel is within that another zone besides a residential zone.
I'm not much sure what zone the water district parcel is in, but like, the Muncy Park Village approved the partitioning, so it's maybe just within there.
Just for your information, the portion of the water district property on Dogwood is in the village, and that is still zone residential.
Yeah.
I assume so. I just wasn't familiar with-
I don't know about Muncy Park.
Just curiosity.
Any other questions?
Because that could be problematic.
Possible. Any other board questions? Do we have any questions from any village residents?
Yes. I do, because then he would come work behind my property.
Okay, this is Stillworth. This is, because we're a public hearing, I need you to-
I'm sorry.
No, I just need you to tell your name and address, that's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in Stillworth. I live at 325 Manhasset Woods Road. And actually, I went and I spoke to Abe Schreier at Manhasset Water District because he said when they put up the second blue water tower, everybody in Manhasset sighed adjoining his property. When they sued, it's up the gizou. So what he did at that time, because they thought that it affected their property, now he needed the water, Flawell did not sue, as I recall. And he offered each person that was adjoining the Water District an easement free. They could use their property adjoining, which they had been all along. And they would get it free. They wouldn't have to buy anything, sell anything. And they would keep the property, but they had an easement permanently. They signed papers for that. Why on earth he would go and go and buy it, I don't know. If he could get it for free. So this was his deal with the Muncy Park resident. I don't know where you are. I, I spoke to him this past week. And quite because then he'd be coming further into the back of my property. Right now, he is a little bit to the back of my property, but then it would be more. Because when I spoke to Mr. Yenikag, he showed me a little four foot piece of property, and he said, this is how much they're giving me. And when I went to the Water District, it looked like it was going a little bit further back. And then I had, that's just right to me. So I do want to.
I can assure you, only Water District property is going to be transferred to the Yenikags. It's not going to affect any of the neighbors' property lines.
That's right next door to me, and my, my bedroom is at that end of the house where he would be adding more property, and he puts a driveway in there further, which he has five cars parked there now. Every weekend, three, four, five cars in the front driveway in front of the house. Naturally, they want to make it wider so that they can park the cars back there as to buy some shit. And my bedroom is that nearby, and people are all getting into their cars sometime in the middle of the night. I'm being stirred. And I'm not getting any younger, and I hear everything at night, and it bothers me a lot. So they can use the property. They've had swings. He told me they've had swings and big stuff and everything. All of them never bothered him. And that's not quite as large as probably they have tended to make it. That's a smaller area, closer to the back of his property than to the back of my property.
Whose property are you referring to?
I'm talking about Yenikag. He's the one you're representing.
And you said, so you said a sh, a sh, is that another?
There was a small patch, and this seems to be. There's a small patch that they've been using.
Right, so nothing, nothing on ground is going to change or should be.
Yeah, so I'm a little confused because you're saying that they're taking property, and you're saying nothing's changing.
Yeah.
What is it?
No property, no property is changing. It's simply, it's simply the boundary line. It's simply that, that the property line is going to now reflect that it's the Yenikags' property as opposed to Water District's property.
But it's been like that for how long?
Exactly. Decades, I would say, conservatively, forty, fifty years.
How long has the Water District's fence been up there?
I would conservatively, I would say forty, fifty years, but I think more.
So in essence, whoever's been in that property, possibly before these people have owned the house, they've possibly been using that piece of property as their own for forty years.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. And that's why no, nothing on the ground is going to change at all in any way. It's simply changing the, the, so it's on paper. No, I hear what you're saying.
So just to clarify maybe, what exists currently on the, I guess, what would be the easterly lot line of this parcel?
Yes.
What's currently on that lot line? Is anything? Is there a fence? Is there a Pedro? Is there anything?
Are you, so are you referring to, if you look at the colored map that I provided, the yellow area is the transfer, is the transfer. So which area are you questioning?
I'm saying the lot line where your.
Where the Water District fence is?
No, that backs up some.
Right here, this yellow line at the bottom?
Yeah, what currently exists on that lot?
Uh, you can see the fixtures. There's a photograph of that. There's a photograph. If you look at Photograph 10, you can see. Or maybe 11 is even better. You can see the, you can see the stake in Photograph 11. So to the right of the stake would be.
Which way is the photograph?
So that's, that's looking towards the fence. That's, that would be north. So to the, to the right, to the east.
So there's, is that a landmark? What is that?
That's a surveyor engineer stake to show the boundary line. So to the, to the east of that, to the right of that stake is, is Ms. Dilworth's property. To the left is the transfer area. So the property is, is going to be, is unaffected. And paragraph 10 is a writer. We can go over that.
Well, there would be, there would be some buffer lots that would be take place, I think, on the Flowerville side. If there were any help structure in that.
Right, that would require separate, I'm sorry.
So I think that's what you have to think about is, you know, it's going to be hard to dictate what they can and cannot do with that property. But what can be dictated is how that could be buffered against the back of the yard of your property.
So what's there now? Is there a fence separating Mrs. Dilworth's property?
No, there's nothing.
There's nothing?
No, the driveway is where the property ends, actually.
There's a fence, but I believe, if you look at photographs.
There's a.
Photograph 4 and 5. There's a hedge that goes, that separates the properties, which I believe ends at a certain point. And then there's a grass area.
It looks like the, the curb line's right on the property.
And the driveway, their driveway ends. People before them wanted to extend the driveway as they asked for. But they asked us for, and we said, no, it's not lessening our property so that they could drive in. And right now, they can park five cars, and they're on the road, they get it. And their restrooms, their big ones.
And again, that's, that's the way it's been for decades. I believe, I believe your property has hedges that separates.
Yes, but hedges are not permanent.
So, you know, for visual purposes, there's really no that plus.
Okay.
Question?
Okay, sir, public hearing, I need you to identify your state, name and address.
My name is Jared Tate. I live at, I live on Evans Road on the other side of.
Thank you.
But are there any deed restrictions attached to this transfer?
Oh, there's been no deed yet.
When, when they transfer first, will there be any deed restriction restricting use? Or is it going to be transferred such that it's going to have to continue in its current state forever? Or is there no big deed restrictions? And it's just subject to whatever the zoning is on Muncy Park?
I believe at this point, it would be subject to whatever the zoning is required.
So there aren't those, no restrictions being put on it?
Uh, not, not that I'm aware of.
Well, if the Muncy Park setback rules would apply.
Right, right.
Zoning would apply.
I'll ask you a question since they rarely transfer property because several of us here got involved in this debacle with the easement on Evans Road. And we have, we have the easement. So it was a little unusual when we heard that there was a title transfer actually occurring there because that was discussed in farm matter, was being talked about. It was told was not an option, not allowed or not permitted, or couldn't be done, whatever. So when we got the notice that they were transferring title, it was like, wow, that's kind of interesting. All of a sudden. And then, you know, we didn't know anything about it, so we walked from here and here. What was the genesis of this? Why is it being done? What's the benefit to the party? What's the intended use by the people who are getting the benefit? Getting the property? You know, all those kinds of questions. Are there any deed restrictions that are going to go along with this? Since they have, the Water District has the ability to put restrictions on the transferred property.
Right.
So that's why I asked that question.
And they have.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you're going to speak, I need you to identify yourself.
John Lippman.
John Lippman?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, the restrictions that Jared's talking about are in the easements. That'd be something. So just to be fair, you literally, I didn't come here to actually speak, but just to be fair to you, those are deed, those are use restrictions that we have agreed to in the form of the easement. And I don't know if you know that or not, but it's not fair, given the concerns that were raised, that you should make a decision without, or without requesting those copies of those. I mean, it's your best, I'm just going to be in that.
So.
Essentially, there is no impact here.
Okay, sorry, we just have one more.
Wait, that's, that's one more.
My name is Glenda Yenikag. This is my husband, Pete Yenikag. So.
Where do you live?
They're the, they're the.
Oh, they're the Yenikags.
They are the Yenikags, yes. We've been there since 1993. And we absolutely have no desire to do anything with that property. It is on paper, and we have said so to Muncy Park. And there is no, absolutely nothing that's going to be built on it, not going to be torn down on it, nothing going to be, nothing's going to change whatsoever. It's the fact that the property line goes over the driveway. And it, there is liability that the Water District doesn't appear to assume. We can't even ensure that little parcel of land because we're not the rightful landowners of that sliver of land. And so if a tree falls, God forbid someone gets hurt, we can't even ensure that piece of property. So rather than being a burden on the municipality and taxpayers, we said we would assume that liability and the maintenance of that property. And also because it goes right through the driveway that's been there since that house was built in 1930. So for a hundred, you know, nearly a hundred years, the house is there, and those are property lines. So that's all that this is. And, you know, you promise that we, nothing can even be built on it. And it does not infringe in any way, shape or form or, you know, go into anybody's property line.
Every, every property line is affected. All the neighborhood property.
So I, I happen to read the transcript from Muncy Park, and there's very little objections. I read the transcript properly from Muncy Park.
I'll believe that.
Okay. I just want to state that for the record, if no one here happened to read the transcript.
And also, Jimmy, I just want to let you know that the property line, nothing is changing with Mrs. Dilworth's property. Everything remains the same.
Absolutely.
And she's saying four cars. I assume there's not four cars, there's only two cars.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't affect anybody to consider this. It's just a name of the business. And what my fear is, is that now they own both of these properties, they can knock this all down, throw up a vacuum, and use the whole pool. So one of them is reduced construction, that, you know, they shall remain.
So working all the ride, so they'll push that the property. I mean, how can we do? Muncy Park, if we speak to counsel? We need a two-second hug.
We're going on record. I don't know, but I would wait till they're done. Back on the record.
Sure. Yes, Mrs. Dilworth.
I just wanted to say, the guy's couple that was there before, they moved about five years ago. And since that time, the house has been rented out.
Which house is this?
The house adjoining me, at Mr. Yenikag, 315. He does not live there. He runs, it's rented out. So since the guy is dead. He, he passed away, and then she moved in with her daughter.
You're talking about the house to the south of her house?
Well, that's permissible under by Muncy Park.
So parents, that's Muncy Park.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we, we can't, we can't, we can't.
I didn't say it there. I didn't remember.
It's okay. I think counsel is going to make a suggestion. And then we can move forward.
Yenikag.
Mr. and Mrs. Yenikag.
Yes.
May I ask you, since you have no intention of developing that property or altering it in any way, would you be agreeable to a restriction of the deed that provides that it will remain the way it is?
Yes.
Yes.
In that case, what I would recommend is that the matter be adjourned to the next meeting to give the village attorney an opportunity to discuss with the appropriate parties and with the mayor and board members what that, what form that deed restriction might take. But if parties are agreeable and we can get to, can get to a result that satisfies everyone's needs, then it's a win-win.
Is that agreeable? You want to ask your clients?
So essentially, we're going to adjourn to the next public hearing to further.
Okay, most, most to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second, good. Oh, wait, hold.
Okay, we're off to the next.
Now, hold, hold, hold. It's still, no, you're still, we're still, we're, we haven't voted yet. They have a question.
But it's, it's irrelevant how many car, I, my neighbor has four cars also. There's nothing I can tell about it. But, but I hope you're happy now because they are going to now have to provide.
Wait, we're not sure yet.
Well, if, if they, if they agree, that will ease your mind that they can't ever do anything with the property, and it eases their mind that there won't be any problems with neighbors.
Next, we'll adjourn to the next.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
So. Mr. Mayor, that would be adjournment specifically to August 1st, 7:30, so you don't have to re-notice the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lippman.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So all in favor to adjourn, I assume, unanimous?
Excellent.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second.
He motioned, I made the motion. He was unanimous. Adjourn to the.
Okay. Okay, next on the public hearing schedule is post local law I of amending Section 227/33, parking and traffic regulations on Middle Neck Road.
All right. So this is our second public hearing on the topic. The things we were reviewing for this was we're going to add no U-turns on Middle Neck Road, 25 mile an hour speed limit, and then we were going to amend the no parking and no stopping standing. Sorry, we're going to amend the no parking any time for the specific footage on Middle Neck Road to allow parking up to 17 parking slots. We're going to restrict any commercial parking, and we're going to adjust some no stopping any time on another section of Middle Neck Road. For the record, we've had this topic open due to the large amount of business-related parking that's been on Ridge Drive West. So in order to help allay that parking issue, the thought was to add parking onto Middle Neck Road in front of the apartment buildings, where we would, after speaking to the owners of both businesses, they both thought it was a really good place for their employees to be parking. Now, my big concern, and I'll bring that up now, even though it's part of the later part of the meeting, is the cost. Our highway superintendent went and quoted out to three companies who do striping, and the lowest bid came to nineteen and what? I can't find the number. It's nineteen. Thank you.
Nineteen thousand?
Yes.
What did they shop in?
I guess you didn't read.
Aviar?
I guess you didn't read my email. The lowest bid was nineteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So even though I think this is a very worthy thing to do, to put the parking onto Middle Neck Road, the bids that came in are just, just crazy. I mean, nineteen seven, nineteen six was the cheapest, and the highest was twenty-two, three, and the middle bid was twenty-one, five. So if we were to vote in favor of this, I know the conversation we had was we'd want to approve the striping bid at the same meeting. I, I think those numbers are, are very high.
Where'd we get the bids from? Is it listed in here?
Yeah.
It's a few pages in, it's, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I have a different purchase report.
One of the companies was the one that did Stony Town for us.
Yeah, they did, yeah, they did a couple of times for us.
And is that the lowest bidder?
No, they're the middle.
Okay. But it was very close.
So the fact, and, you know, since being in this business, I have a little exposure to how bids work. The, the fact that they're so close, all three bids, leads me to believe that that's about what it's going to, that's, that's the cost to do this.
Right.
If, if, you know, one bid was, you know, or they were way out of whack, but when you're within a few thousand dollars, apparently considering the price of things nowadays and what's going on, this may be the best price, this may be it. I mean, this is probably what it's, what it's worth. Gary, what do you think?
I would come to the same conclusion, I mean, unless we think there's collusion going on, um, it just, it's the price tag for this to work. Yeah, I agree with what the price said.
How long do they, would it last, like the striping?
Like how many, in how many years might you have to do it again?
Up to about five, five to ten years depending, and it got road traffic, so.
Well, hold on, you gotta remember, this is also for striping the parking spots. That will probably never have to repaint because nobody drives on that.
Right.
This is just for the yellow stripe in the middle, so.
Does it include the parking?
It does, no, this whole bid includes moving the yellow stripe.
Yeah, yeah.
And painting the white parking stalls. So in the future wears away, the parking stalls won't wear away.
Yeah, realize it's costing a few thousand dollars to remove the existing striping. You know, that's like four or five thousand dollars generally, yeah, it's got to strip that and so when you start adding it up, you take that out and now you're talking fourteen thousand dollars for everything else. I don't think it's so unreasonable, it's a long stretch of road.
Right.
I, I, I.
It's just, it's a lot more money than I expected.
I know, but unfortunately.
I just wanted the board to realize that we're going to spend.
The nature of construction right now is everything is more money, but I think holding this up probably is, if we're going to do it, we should just do it, I think. It's going to, you know, create better quality of life for the residents on Ridge Drive. You know, and, and what are we going to save if we hold off? I mean, you know, maybe a couple thousand bucks, but we have to, we'll have to go out to a bunch of different people. And the reality is, you know, I don't like to use the word collusion, but it, there isn't collusion always in the construction industry. Contractors know what things cost, you know, they know what other contractors charge. So the fact that the numbers are pretty similar, they're probably getting the materials from the same distributor because it's, you know, specialized highway epoxy, you know, there aren't a lot of, you don't just walk into Home Depot and buy that, no. So, you know, I think based on my experience that we should proceed with the vote on accepting the low bidder and get this job done.
Okay.
But that's just my opinion.
Any other comments from any other board members?
Well, I would, I would just say that if we think that it's more money than it should be, then we better be absolutely sure that we're convinced this is the way to go. You know, it raises the stakes on this a little bit, if you will, so, you know, we, you know, I think we just want to be absolutely sure that this is, we've got the right specs and everything. Because if, if, God forbid, something goes awry, then you're going to have to fix it. So I just want to be sure that.
Well, these specs were done by, by, uh.
Right.
V H, V H bid.
Right. We wouldn't have to, if we were to make, you're trying to say if we had to undo this, we probably wouldn't move the yellow striped center line, that would probably just stay. We would just probably end up removing the parking. I don't think we need to move the yellow line back the sixty.
I'm just saying maybe we should, we should take one last look.
You gotta look at the state, uh, highway code.
It's, it's, it's within code, where it is now. And where we're moving it to is still within, well, well within code.
And the only other thing is, you know, Richie gets a couple of cans of yellow paint, you go out there and you, one guy goes like this and you just.
Yeah, there you go.
No, the hard part is moving, is taking the old one out.
You paint over a great painting, there's no difference, that's what they do at parking lot.
You just turn over it.
Yeah.
So then what are you suggesting, Gary?
I'm, I'm just saying we should just make sure everything is painted on the drawing, so that's all.
I think the draw, I mean, you and I reviewed it with the traffic company.
I think we made one, didn't we make some alteration? I didn't see the last year of iteration, so anyway, it's fine, we can do that, I'm just saying, I, you know, I think we all, we should be mindful.
I think though, the, you know, V H B is what they do.
You know, Gary and I have a lot of questions for them, they answered them all pretty well and I think any small modification that needed was, was done. But again, it's, it's a lot of money to spend and I just wanted the board, before they wrote on this, to understand that we're spending these dollars.
I, I kind of feel like we've talked about this parking with four residents that have been here for two, every, I can't even imagine having them come back in and saying, you know, for a few thousand dollars, we're not sure and so therefore you're going to have these people parking in front of your house again after we've said that we did this, paid for the study, had the study, came up.
We finally have a solution, but now, eh, maybe we'll save like twelve bucks and.
No, 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 I'm saying, I just want the board to understand this is twenty thousand dollars. And that, that's, that's all I'm asking for because I don't want everyone coming back later on.
But no, we have to swallow.
I just spent twenty thousand dollars for three houses, so I just want everyone to be aware. I don't know if you read my notes before the meeting. I just want to make sure everyone knows this is what we're spending. Alright, anybody from the public would like to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, Republic, here, name an, you know, name an address before you speak.
Go ahead.
Dr. Marino.
Mr. Dr. Marino.
That's later, that's later.
Uh, want to bring to the attention of the board, to the attention of the board, but I think is a potentially very dangerous situation.
Is this related to what we're talking about right now on Middle Neck Road?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no.
So this is what we're talking about, Middle Neck Road.
Hearing on the official of Middle Neck Road.
Mr. Frankel, for the record.
Twelve paper, Richard. Why are you spending twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer money to deal with an issue for three or four houses that have a parking problem? When you don't know for a fact that Middle Neck Road and putting these spaces there, that this is going to solve a problem, that it's even going to work? Don't you think that's rather extreme? The amount of money, the solution has been completely vetted that this is the only way and we're trying to placate how many residents on a parking issue? That's a lot of money.
I would say.
It's more than three, it's more than three.
It's more than three.
It's everybody who lives on Ridge Drive?
I mean, and.
Because three people have been very vocal, but they're representing all the people on Ridge Drive.
It is a problem, we can all agree about that, that's a problem that we're trying to solve and we think that this is a solution. Will it be a silver bullet? Probably not, but it'll certainly improve the conditions.
But David, we, we hired a well-respected traffic engineer to look at the area, to analyze what's going on and they came up with a solution. So it's not vetted by the board or peer who said, let's try this and take a crap shoot. We hired a, a very good engineering firm. Gary and I and Ronnie spoke them, spoke to them in detail about the plan, on why they think it would work. I spoke to the owners of both businesses and they both agreed, I mean, they can't force their employees to park there, but they all agreed that it would be a much more desirable place for their employees to park instead of walking across busy Middle Neck Road, walking up the hill, parking in the residential neighborhood. They felt that their employees would be able to see their cars, they would want to park there. So there, there's a little bit of science behind this process.
I just don't want to see my board with egg on their face for spending twenty thousand dollars for a solution that may or may not work, no different than corporations in the sixties, seventies and eighties hiring IBM to be their solution company, only because the name was IBM. I'm not saying you don't have professional services and the best advice doing this, but they could be wrong too. I just want you, before that kind of money is spent, to really ask yourselves whether or not this problem, is that big a problem? We're spending that amount of money, I guess that's what you're going to vote on.
Well, Rich, when, when would we have to re-stripe that road?
What do you mean?
When would be the next time we would have to re-stripe that?
It's just done.
It was just.
Right, remember we just paved Middle Neck Road.
Middle Neck Road repaving.
Well, it was paved and then we got the, we got this road way after we got paid, right?
But it's only been two, three years since they paved it.
And how often?
More than ten years, about.
Ten years, so it's last ten years.
Okay.
Just curious.
I go down Middle Neck Road every day, it's, it's, the, the striping is in excellent condition, excellent condition. Like to speak?
Uh, well, my, previously what I wanted to say.
I'm sorry, Mrs. County, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, name and address.
Carrie O'Callaghan, Ridge Drive West. Um, at the last meeting when we had talked about the parking on Middle Neck Road, we had thought about doing why with the southermost spot, the one closest to our driveway. And I just wanted to make sure that that was still part of the plan because when I looked, um, on the website today, it looked like the same drawing was still there.
We, we are not going to change the drawing.
So you're going to leave the one that's.
We're going, we're going to only do sixteen spots and not seventeen, so we're removing that spot.
Oh, you will, okay.
But I, I didn't, I'm not going to, I wasn't going to pay to have the architect, architect, the engineer change the plan. It's the same plan from last month, but yes, we, we won't be utilizing that spot.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, if there's no other questions from the board and if there's no other questions from the public, would anybody like to make a motion for local law I of twenty-two to amend section twenty-two dash seven thirty-three, et cetera, et cetera? But I'm sure Steve's going to say something about SECRE resolution.
Well, yes, close, we need to close the hearing, we'll need to comply with SECRE and then enter term motion.
Alright.
Okay, we have, we have the, um, the resolution with the SECRE, so, okay, so, um, um, do I have a motion to close the public portion, the public hearing portion?
Oh, I'll make that motion.
And we have a second?
A second.
Trustee Dorfman, all in favor? Joe hands?
Aye.
Okay, anybody abstaining or vote no? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, now, um, would anybody like to make the resolution, the resolution in your package, um, enacting local law seven?
And, and as Ronnie pointed out, the resolution incorporates the SECRE compliance.
I can't hear, I'm sorry, what?
The resolution incorporates the SECRE compliance. So it's, it's a single resolution that will both comply with SECRE and adopt the, the law.
Okay, so for the record, because this is being recorded and transcribed, um, whereas the board of trustees has determined it is in the best interest of the village to adopt local law I, amending chapter twenty-two twenty-seven by any restrictions to Middle Neck Road, um, the board has determined it is lead agency per courses of SECRE and has determined that the consideration of the local law is the type to action. Um, now the resolve that the board adopt local law seven and that this law shall be, shall take effect immediately. So I'm asking for a motion to approve that.
Make the motion.
Trustee Ludowski? Second.
A second.
Trustee Dorfman? Okay, um, trustee Ludowski?
Aye.
Um, trustee Collins? This is on the parking, the parking regulations.
This is the law, this is only the law.
We had to close the public hearing, now we're voting, voting on the actual law.
This is no U-turn, twenty-four miles an hour.
Okay, aye.
Okay, trustee Dorfman?
Aye.
Um, trustee Janice?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Frankel?
Aye.
And mayor?
Aye.
Okay. So since now, do you want to, does somebody want to offer a resolution to enter into a contract to strike Middle Neck Road sixteen parking spaces?
I'll make the motion.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Me.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Ludowski?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Dorfman?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Janice?
Aye.
Trustee Frankel? Mayor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes, um. Great, now we have a one with our next order of business.
Public comment. Mr. Marino.
Mr. Marino, Dr. Marino.
Doctor.
I have to tell you, Dr. Marino, that's a terrible lesson yesterday.
Ah, I do go to the top. See that? Get after these guys, I guess. This is nothing to do with.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
And Hasselwood Road, want to bring your attention to what I think is a potentially dangerous situation and an incident that I had there last week, of last week. So this is the stretch between Walters Lane and, uh, which starts as a hill, up the hill. So here's Walters Lane, here's the start of that hill, it's a short hill, but a rather steep hill, resulting in a blind spot on the top of the hill. Now, that blind spot, of course, is never a problem, uh, here's the top of the hill, so you see down the hill, you can't see anything. It's not a problem unless there's a big landscape truck parking, parked there, which there was when I was here last Friday. Uh, so, you know, after driving for fifty-five years, to tell you the truth, I was a little bit intimidated because I, I had no idea what's coming at me. Um, so I waited there about ten seconds at the top of this hill, no one's coming, said my prayers, went about five miles an hour around the truck and wouldn't you know it, car going way over the speed limit of thirty is ready to have a, have a collision with me. Streaks to a stop, I flash my lights, honk my horn, ten more feet, head on. Uh, it was not even an apology from the guy, that's the way the world is. I propose to the board that you consider no parking or standing signs along here. It's a boot, it's a boot. Not only was there a big, uh, large landscape truck here, uh, with a trailer, he doesn't park on the lawn, he says to cut the lawn, so he's in the middle of the street, it's a huge truck. He's not only parked there, but he's faced the wrong way, the, the truck is facing me, so I really can't see a normal thing. This is a very, very dangerous situation, very dangerous.
So.
I came very close.
This, this has come up in the past, right?
And, and this is not, this is not.
It's happened to all of us, you know.
This is not unique, I, I drive this road all the time, it's, you know, you know where I'm at. And you're like, going down to Stony Town all the time, there's always trucks parked here.
It's something for us to consider, however, you then run into the issue of where are the landscapers going to park? They need to service these houses.
They can park at the other side of the street, that, and that, listen, these are not moving trucks, they just roll and move across the street. Uh, you know, parking on the other, the correct side, on the other side of the street, not an issue because you don't have the blind, you don't have the blind spot coming up the hill, it's going down.
They used to pull over onto the grass until everybody put the rocks there.
I don't know why they don't put, they don't park in driveways, that's why.
But that, that's another possibility, people may complain about that if they have to go somewhere.
But on that same street, when someone's taking a tree down, they do have someone standing there, right? To at least like alert you.
They had cones, there were cones from the truck, useless because you still have to get around the truck.
It's a problem, I totally agree, I've been in the same situation.
It's very scary, very.
Alright, well, something we'll look at, it's just, this has come up before and it's, if you say no parking, now the residents there who want to be able to park now can't park. I mean, it's, it's difficult to do that, but it's.
Some would sign up on Hasselwood Road?
No, it's all service trucks. And I have no problem with parking on the other side of the street, people are coming up, that's okay, there's no blind spot, it's a blind spot.
Yeah, but in this case, but if we said parking only on one side of the street, Mr. Marino still would have the same problem.
Right, there'd have to be, be that straight down.
There'd have to be no parking and then where is anybody, any service vehicles going to park?
Well, on, on the opposite side of the street, I think it's safe because there's no blind spot, you don't have a blind spot coming up the hill, you can see it's in front of you.
You'd have to do the uphill on, on both sides, but alternates, you know, right? So where, where are you going uphill, you, you do that right side and then on the other side.
Yeah, let's.
Alright, so you'd have to do it staggered as well.
I understand. So why don't you and I have a quick conversation, figure this, sit with Rich and see if it's something that's doable.
Got to seem to know that Hasselwood Road.
It's, it's just, yeah, that is a problem, street, I remember.
Yeah, it's, it's always, it's, it's been.
We'll, we'll look into it.
Been for thirty years, it's always been scary.
Anybody else? No? Alright, let's move into the regular part of the meeting now.
Okay.
Ronnie, it's all yours.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
We, I need a motion to approve the minutes, there's three meetings that we've held. Um, first was the June sixth regular meeting, public hearing, the thirtieth special meeting and the July sixth special hearing.
I read them all, I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Uh, trustee Frankel, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to approve claims and just for your information, we are holding the claim for code red. Um, while, uh.
We're going to look into a possible alternative solution. Instead of having to do code red and constant contact, we're looking to find one service that will, uh.
My code red doesn't work, I, I don't know.
We'll, we'll try to find something that's better, it's a little easier to use, so for now, we'll try to go month to month with code red until we, uh, I have another possible. I have another possible solution, I just need to do a little more research on it.
Okay, so do I approve the claims? And then, just as a note, trustee Frankel is excluded from the claim for the orphaned escape.
And I'm going to recuse myself for my own expenses.
And I'll accuse myself of more. About everyone.
So I'll, unless anybody has any questions, I'll make the motion to accept the claims.
I'll second it.
Right, trustee Janice, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, Architectural Review.
Architectural Review Board Committee, sorry. June twenty-seventh. We had data applications before us. Fifty-one pine woods, they were back a second time. We still had a number of comments. And then returning to the next pair of city comments. From the zoning board, three seventy, Manassas Woods Road, this is a covered patio, backyard. We had a slight modification on some of the trim work there, so we asked to approve the board with that condition. Twenty-seven Northwoods, new residents. Had, had some comments on the detailing. And that was approved with those conditions. Nineteenth Hundred Club Drive, another new residence. I'll just say, this is, this is a challenging lot shape to deal with the topography. So we had, uh, sort of, uh, asked them to come back with a new direction on the, uh, the code, the driveway code and so forth. It's, it actually got to the point, right, this, they, it got to the point where we felt that, um, we, uh, they, they almost needed to not comply with the front yard setback in order to make this work. It's a very deep front yard setback because of some very deep loss there. So we asked to come back with a, with a new design that we, that maybe the committee might support based on what they submit, might support the, uh, the variance application. It's a very challenging shaped block.
Is this the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
So they'll, they'll be coming back. They will not be, they will be back on the next meeting.
Nineteen? Nineteen hundred clubs?
So, front yard variance, what does that mean? The new setback could be even closer to the house?
Closer to the-
To the street?
To the street. But, but not out of line with any of the houses. Because one house, for instance, has, it's almost a hundred feet back. So it throws off the whole setback, uh, average, is how it works. So, uh, you know, it still would be, it would still be with most of the houses that, that already-
You would comply with the standard, but not comply with the average.
Yeah.
And the averages, yeah.
It would be the minimum, there's a minimum of forty-three would meet, meet that then stop. But we'll, we have to see how they're gonna figure the whole, whole design.
And again, that would have to go for a variance.
Yes.
Okay.
If you read the notes, just the way it was, like, the driveway competing on the neighbor, they have to go under the house with the grading, made a few stories on one side. So there's a lot of issues with working within the zoning. Which we felt, you know, it'd be better to take a new direction on that. Next one, uh, one called Rennie, addition over the garage. They also did some other dormers. They, they, they definitely some changes. There was some scale issues with the dormers and, and detailing. We asked them to come back. Two eighty-nine Crab Apple, new portico walkway, driveway modifications. We asked them to come back. Some of the detailing of the quarter.
No, no, we're not.
Forty-eight Fernwood, uh, front covered porch that was approved as submitted. Thirty-three Birchdale additions and alterations. Just one adjustment on, uh, some porch columns. And we'll approve with that condition. And that's the reported, the June twenty second. I think if you look in the, uh, agenda, it says June twenty-second, it was due to twenty-second.
Okay. Anybody from the public with any questions?
And I have a motion approving the findings of the Architectural Review Committee.
I'll make the motion.
And do we have a second? Trustee Frankel? Um, trustee Ludowski, you're abstaining.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, sorry, trustee Ludowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or?
I'm abstaining also.
You're abstaining also?
From all of them?
Well, which one are you abstaining from?
He has to, he's all because he's ARC.
Oh, oh, no, I'm not abstaining.
Oh, okay.
I know, I know, I know I do a lot of cool things, but you don't have to follow me all the time.
Hey, you know. You're my idol, so.
Okay, anybody oppose this or any other extensions? Don't move. Okay. Next is, we already did the road tracking pin, now it's my report. We're still working on our municipality work, Corbin, that's a building department, so it's clear, which will take a few months to, uh, to get up and running. All of our files have now been scanned and everybody in the office is finding it huge, a huge, huge advantage. Now, when we get files or requests for building folders, we just email them. We don't collect fees, we're not standing there with a copy or making copies. It's been fabulous, we, we just love it. Newsletter, uh, as soon as the mayor sends me his, uh, his letter, we'll go, we will start working on it. JB, you and I, and putting these together, hopefully have it out before the end of the month. If there, again, if anybody has any article or anything that they would like us to include, please let me know. And last, I would like to ask for the board to approve attendance for myself and Heather Lancy at the Nycom for Training School. And for our court clerk, Susan Williams, to attend, uh, Court Clerk Training School this coming fall. Total course, and these are week-long training, total course is under five thousand hours.
This is, this is the same trainings that everybody goes to every year. So this is not extraordinarily different. Perfect.
All, all the same, but the classes do change.
I'm just saying that we, we always approve this every year.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Trustee Dorfman, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or oppose? Okay. Policy, re-communications submitted to the village.
So, I've got a couple of things. That, that's, uh, you'll see this next month. Counsel is working on it. The village, um, some trustees and employees have been receiving some occasional emails that are, um-
Inappropriate.
That's the word, thank you, inappropriate. So we just want to have a policy on what to do when we receive inappropriate, um, emails. How the village would proceed. Actually, I'll take that back, it's here in our packet. So, read it over, we'll have a conversation on it next month. And if it's any changes you want, let us know beforehand. If not, hopefully it's something we can discuss and approve at the next board meeting. Couple other things I have. I'd like to congratulate Ronnie on getting her master's clerk degree. For the record.
I just want to thank the board for their support.
Yes, to send you to clerk school this time.
This is-
Clerk college?
I, I went to clerk college, I got my masters. And I've been working on this probably for the last fifteen years. And I am only the twenty-seventh master municipal clerk in the state of New York ever. So there's only, there's only two of them.
But you do get the pin, right?
I got the pin.
That's it.
That's all that matters, is the pin.
I just look at it.
What happens?
It's like a little pin that's in the-
A little master's pin. You don't have to wear the cap and mortar? Cap and gavel, no?
No.
It's good, masters of it.
All right, I want to thank Rich for the American flags, doing the nice painting and power washing on the Middle Neck Road gate at Greenway. Ronnie and I met with Gina Salitti. We've got our hands out asking for grants. There's a lot of very interesting proposals I sent her way. And hopefully, one of them, Gary, is the sewer study. Because that's very near and dear to her heart, that type of funds. So maybe we'll get some money for that. I sent a letter to Long Island Railroad supporting returning more express trains because that's been a big issue with these proposed schedules. Now that Grand Central Madison, is that the right name, Mitchell? Grand Central Madison is opening-
I don't know why, like, you have to call it Grand Central.
So, there's been a, a few residents asking me about that. I also sent a letter to the governor, asking her to sign legislation that's on her desk, which would allow a village to lower its speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour across the whole village, instead of what we have to do now is naming each individual street and putting signage up. So, I also spoke to Ms. Salitti to, for her support, but it has passed the Assembly in the Senate. It's in front of the governor, so hopefully she signs that. And I'm stealing Ronnie's thunder, we're getting the second half of our ARPA dollars.
It's to you to announce, not me.
Now, we're getting our money.
So we're getting another two hundred fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money for this year. Because that's the final tranche.
Right.
Well, let's strike away.
It's good for ten hundred rooms.
Yeah. Now you just need to find the land.
That's right, there you go.
Um, yeah, man, that's a what it is.
Hey, that's a good idea.
Should have asked for easement to make a pickable court. You, you had your chance. All right, um-
Well, he's coming back next month, so.
Oh, Mayor?
Any trustees reports on anything? No?
Mayor, um, I, I wanted to know if you wanted to pass a resolution exactly that policy.
The communication policy?
Yes.
Oh, I thought we, we-
No, I think, I think Jeff's going to continue working on that.
Yeah. Let's wait till next month, just, I, I'd like everybody to read it, just in case. But let's wait till next month.
I'm sorry.
I, I'd like to pass it, but we wait till next month.
And I do have one, Rich just let me know that he heard from our village engineer, Steve Warner, Zach. And, um, the survey, survey of Middle Neck Road will begin in the next couple of days and we should have it by August first or second.
Great. Excellent. And for the record, the county is paying for that, so it's not coming from the village coffers at all. Any old business, Ronnie? I guess not.
Uh, no old business.
I'll let you run with the new business.
Okay. The first item is the road worth bid and the awarding of the contract. And, um, I just wanted to note that the village received bids for the paving contract for this year and Chris Datschuk is obligated to receive the lowest responsible bidder. After reviewing the bids and the bidders, the village has determined that the lowest responsible bidder is John McGowan and Sons. While another bidder was numerically the lowest, the board has assessed that that firm's firework within the village and has determined that it is not the lowest responsible bidder and has therefore declined to proceed with that bidder.
Haven't heard anything coming in there.
And, uh-
Central meeting?
With rise.
And, and that was done after, after a hearing on notice to the bidder. The bidder was represented by counsel. Evidence was received by the board and based upon the record of that hearing, the board made a determination.
Right, some of us see it around that far. Are they, so I'm curious if, if-
I'm surprised if they didn't also withdraw the-
And I don't think they're gonna pursue any of them, because I don't think that would fit.
Uh, so that would bring us to a resolution authorizing us to enter into a contract with John McGowan and Sons in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars with twenty-twenty-two payment agreement to approve the contract.
I want to ask, hold on.
Well, this doesn't include the add-ons.
Like, so do we have to have a motion?
Do we have to, if there are add-ons to the contract? And do we, do we include them in the, the amount or? This is the base contract.
Right.
Then there were add-ons, so we could either accept or reject.
I don't have add-ons, I'm just in motion. So if we're gonna change that?
I, I'll change the number, I don't have the, the folder with me, but, um, it's, it's another, about another hundred thousand.
How about, moved, I have it here, one, next to the next, and then we'll come back.
Um, okay, so next, I, because there were ma, uh, major changes to the artificial turf prohibition law, you know, changing, putting it into a different section, we're going to introduce it as a new local, as a, as same local law, not in a number or as a letter H, but as a new local law. So, um, it will be as if we're introducing this, um, uh, putting artificial turf in the category of a structure. Yeah. And, uh, scheduled for public hearing for August first. So, um, I wonder if we could do this all at once. Then we also have introducing, uh, local law J, amending the landmark commission section of the code, altering the number of members and the terms. And then we have local law K, um, which is amending the definition of a holiday to include all federal holidays rather than individual holidays. And that is in two sections of our code. And also introducing, and local law L, which would, um, amend our section on peddling and solicitation and our attorney is currently working on that. But these are all scheduled for hearing on August first.
So, for the record, um, I want to change the number of people on the landmark commission from five to three because I can't find five volunteers. I also want to change the term from five years down to one year, just to have some flexibility on that. Definition, definition of holidays, we weren't able with the most recent holiday, federal holiday that was just added, we weren't able to do certain things with code enforcement because it wasn't on our calendar. So if we change our village code to just mirror the federal holiday list, if and when there are new holidays added, we don't have to keep on changing our local law. And we want to tighten up the peddling solicitation and commercial circularization law because we've had an influx of, um, solicitors in the village. And with all the recent crime, it has upset a lot of people to have these very aggressive salespeople, predominantly for these, um, pest services, coming door to door with some of their, uh, pitch strategy, to be polite. And, uh, I think this would just kind of restrict, who, well, not restrict. It would allow us to know who's coming and for a little more strict penalties if people were to knock on doors that have, on the do not solicit list and have the do not solicit sticker, which was my house and I still had these guys knocking on my door. They knock on everybody's doors. So i- if we change our law, I think we can dial it back a little bit and I think the residents would appreciate that a lot. Ronnie, I cannot find for the life of me right now the, uh, the bid numbers.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, what was the tunnel?
You emailed it out, right? I, I'll try to find it. We'll have a race to find it.
Anybody want to get the photo of my test?
Actually, I don't know.
I didn't know where it is. It's on that gray file cabinet on the, behind, behind the window, next to the window. Thank you.
All right, so let's-
You don't know where it is. You don't know where it is.
Ronnie, let's, let's do the mo...
I appreciate, I appreciate you.
Let's do all the motions on everything.
Okay, so, um, okay, so, uh, can we do this all at once, since it's all scheduled for the same? Okay, so, uh, can I have a motion, um, approving the introduction of the local laws